Twenty-four to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Laura.
Here.
Mayor Lehman.
Here.
Item number two, if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Council? Mr. Laura?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Laura, second by Mr. Whiting, any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent agenda, any changes to the consent agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Council? Councilor Contreras?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business.
Second, Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none. Mr. Reynolds, you want to read the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for September 4th of 2024, excuse me, September 3rd of 2024. For A1 are the city council minutes. For A2 approves a gambling premise permit for Shakopee Valley amateur hockey. For A3 is an off-site gambling permit for Shakopee Valley amateur hockey. For A4 approves a consumption and display permit for American group of hotels doing business as Baymont by Wyndham in Shakopee. For A5 awards a bid on Public Works LED light conversion project. For B1 approves a waiver of special assessment appeal rights for Merris Street, 13th Avenue, and Hanson Avenue utility extension project. For B2 approves a contract for the 2024 native restoration project. For C1 is a final plat of Arbor Bluff second edition. For C2 is an intergovernmental agreement with Jackson Township for the Jackson Commons Park. For C3 declares equipment from Lions Park Disc Golf Course surplus and authorizes its sale.
Mr. Reynolds? We do have a motion and a second. There's no discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, recognition of residents of Shakopee by the city council on an item not on the agenda. So if you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to step forward to the table here. Anybody here for an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Item number six, business removed from the consent agenda, which there is none. Item number seven, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Motion from council, Mr. Whiting.
I'll make a motion to recess to our Economic Development Authority meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Delaney, any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we are in recess. Madam President?
I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for September 3rd, 2024. Staff first, if you could make note of the roll, please. Thank you. That was number one for roll call. Number two, approval of the agenda. Do we have?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Whiting, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Laura. And then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number three, we have consent business, and on that we have the EDA minutes. Any questions for staff on those minutes? All in, yes, sir.
I'll move the consent business.
Yes, we have a motion, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lehman, and a motion and a second by Commissioner Delaney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And general business, we have our 2025 EDA levy and budget. Good afternoon, Nate, I'm here to present.
Yep, good evening, President and Commissioners, I'll pull up my PowerPoint here, quick. Is that showing, okay. So tonight, we're asking for EDA consideration of the proposed 2025 EDA tax levy. If approved tonight, the levy will be forwarded to the city council for approval on September 17th. Generally speaking, the budget being proposed is similar to what we have in the current year budget, there's no real significant changes. The EDA levy is subject to a limit of estimated market value, 0.0185% of market value. The EDA levy cap for 2025 is 1.4 million, so the levy being proposed tonight is well within that cap. The EDA levies slightly differs from the general fund levy that it gets applied to all taxable properties within the city, including properties that are currently part of a tax abatement or a TIF plan. The EDA levy is also identified separately on your property tax statements, separate from the city's general property tax. The EDA levy is specifically designated for economic development activities, and any funds unspent from year to year will be carried over for this purpose. For River City Center, the EDA is responsible for the business tenants on the main level, and the CDA continues to manage the senior apartments on the upper level. Currently, the EDA owns the land, and the CDA owns the building. That activity, which is lease revenue expenditures, is accounted for as a separate subfund of the EDA, which I'll have a slide on that as well. Staff is not recommending any change in the EDA levy, which is currently at 500,000. Additional funding is provided through the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission, contribution of half a percent of their revenues, which is part of the negotiated pilot agreement at the end of 2021. The 2025 budget anticipates that contribution to be about 330,000. The expenditure side is primarily made up of personnel and professional services, which should include 100% of the economic development coordinator, and then 50% of the planning and development director, and 331,000 for professional services and engineering, which includes facade loans, entrepreneurship programming, Main Street, and the tap event. For the medium value home, which is valued at 350,700, it equals out to about $20 per year, which is actually a dollar less than last year. And then the River City Center budget, as mentioned earlier, we're reporting it as a separate fund of the EDA, and have a separate budget for it. We have budgeted 400,000 in lease revenues, and 224,000 in expenses for a net operating income of 192,000. Revenues, of course, are the best estimate, as any changes in tenants, renewals, or turnover would obviously have an impact on those revenue forecasts. So with that, I can answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I ask for consideration of the resolutions adopting the 2025 EDA levy and 2025 budget. And then unless there are modifications to the budget and levy proposed at this meeting, we do anticipate asking for city council to adopt the final EDA and levy at the next meeting, so this would be the last time the EDA sees that unless there's requested changes.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioners questioned, yes, Mr. Delaney.
First question, under miscellaneous on page 14 of 17, that was last year for 150,000, was that engineering fees, or that we're not seeing this year?
So we had, actually what we had that in the budget for was for the undergrounding of the lines near Canterbury, Eagle Creek area there.
Isn't under-
Go ahead.
Isn't undergrounding of electricity paid with the undergrounding fee on the utility bill?
There's, in this, in a particular, well, I think the city is obligated for a portion of that, and this would be directed by the city, correct?
They came with a special request last year for this particular stretch.
Yes.
And we awarded that because of that burdensome cost.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Whiting.
I just want to double check on one thing, it said $15 for something, and I think it meant 15K on page, it'd be two of this, but page 5 of 17 of the EDA, it says, second paragraph section, it says 25,000 for Main Street program, 30,000 for tap event, $15 for marketing, I'm assuming that's 15K.
Yeah, 15K.
And 50,000 miscellaneous consulting. Is the 50,000 miscellaneous consulting also for the tap event, or is that just miscellaneous consulting for the EDA?
Well, it could be spent on really any professional consultant, I'm not sure if you had something specific in mind there?
I'm going to bring up the tap event, do we know how profitable has that been paying itself back again in the past years? I know we were going to give it some time.
Yeah. Madam President, board members, the tap event, the dinners paid separately by Shakopee Public Utilities, the event itself is close to break even, it's really designed, we give a lot of complimentary tickets to certain groups to get them to come to Shakopee, and I think you'll see shortly they'll have a pretty resounding success.
Right, it's an economic development event, and I understand it's separate from council, it's-
Correct.
Our group as EDA, I think, we've got to think about things differently.
And so for professional consultants, one of the things we do run is the job board that's been pretty successful, so on our website, we have a separate company that's attached to our website that goes out and crawls all the jobs in just Shakopee that pay above minimum wage, that are more manufacturing jobs, and we get a lot of hits for people that are thinking about moving to Shakopee or looking for a job, they actually go to the city's website, and they get access to all those jobs.
Okay, and it also mentions the 91,000 for the continued entrepreneurship program, is that the, excuse me, is that the leadership, the consultant we have leading that group?
Madam President, yes.
And other parts of that event?
Yeah, it pays for the travel time and all the monthly meetings that we have.
And your staff at the EDA budget funds is like two plus?
So Madam President and board members, we have one staff that's full-time to the EDA, that's John Sullivan, and he handles all of the relationships with the Scott County CDA and with Deed, and then manages River City Center, and then half of it's my salary.
So your salary, sorry, just two plus, or two-ish. Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I'm looking at page nine of 17. On the bottom expenditures, you have professional services, 281, and then if I look at the screen in front of us, it's got personnel for 253, and above it, it says professional services and engineering is 331, so if I go back to nine and add the engineering of 50 to the 281, that makes the 331, but it doesn't line up with the personnel on the bottom of 253.
So you're actually looking at the supplies and services, so I know I've provided the full budget page, so if you want to see what makes up those other amounts outside the 331.
Supplies and services is 416, I'm one line above that at 253 for personnel.
Yep, so that would be covering exactly what Mr. Kurski had stated, so that's the 50% of the planning and development director, and then the full economic development coordinator position.
Okay, so what is in professional services, line item 6327 on page nine for 281?
So I've got to highlight it on the slide, so it would, it says 331, but that's take out the 50,000 for engineering, it would be those items that are listed there. The facade loans, the entrepreneurship programming, Main Street, tap event, marketing, professional consultants.
And then there would be professional services.
Oh, here, yeah.
So where is the wages then, if it's not included in professional services?
Personnel line item.
So the personnel line item is not included in a 331?
Correct.
So then if I go back to page nine, where am I seeing the personnel cost?
Oh, I see, yeah, so I actually updated this single page that I put on here, I must have not pulled in the professional services.
Professional services.
Sorry, the personnel.
But I think the updated amount is, so the updated amount needs to be updated on this page.
It's just actually not shown on this one, the way we grouped it for this report, so that is, that's on me, I didn't catch that.
They included it in the final.
Just trying to tie up the totals.
Correct.
You are correct, yes.
Okay, so what would the total be if we added the personnel cost in the professional services? Does it still equal the 670?
Yes, yes, I just have that more or less hidden.
Bar what?
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, that would be right, yeah, it's more or less just hidden from this paper, the way I ran the report. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Okay, thank you. Any, go ahead, Mr. Delaney.
Have we ever exceeded the, have our expenses for EDA ever exceeded the budget in any year of operation?
Yeah, prior to us having the EDA, and when the levy was 300,000, and before we started, we're getting the SPUC contribution to the Economic Development Authority, we were running a negative.
So we carry over from year, we just keep carrying additions over?
Yeah, anything that's left in fund balance would be carried over from year to year. And the EDA budget with the RCC, since we purchased the master lease and we did the improvements, we're actually running a deficit at this point in time that will be repaid back through the interfund loan with Canterbury district, but any funds would be carried over from year to year within this fund and separated.
Is there any margin to, I mean, we have the expenses, we know we have a pretty set budget, running pretty lean and mean, any margin to reduce or?
Did anybody use the facade loan program last year? Is there an opportunity there to, since we're floating, was it 90-some thousand in that program?
75.
Where did I see that?
70.
70?
Yeah, right here.
Was that coming over from last year, is what I'm saying?
That's this year's budget.
What was, so what was your question, sorry, now we have-
There's money left in the budget from the facade loan program from this last year.
Madam Chair, and members know, and there are two large potential pending requests for buildings that have been recently acquired downtown that you're going to see probably in the next month or so.
So we'll need that.
Yes. And probably some more.
I know. Go ahead.
It's not reflected on our current budget, so we expected it to happen, but it's not, am I missing something?
If it does happen, it'll come out of that 70.
Right.
$75,000.
Yeah.
Thanks.
More like 70, go ahead.
Do we know what the current fund balance in this account is?
So again, the ED and RCC would be combined into one when it was reported, at least at the end of the year, so there was, when I looked at the cash balance, it was a negative 650,000 when I looked at it at the end of last month, but again, that'll be replenished with, well, partially replenished with the second half tax settlement, and then also, you know, as we go through and collect the monthly contribution from SPUC, as well as future revenues coming from the interfund loan for the construction of RCC or the improvements for RCC.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One last question, is there any room to, I guess, decrease the tax on the residents for EDA as far as, I mean, we are running pretty lean and mean, and there is money left over in your budget at the present time, and you have some reserves.
It'll come down to whatever you guys decide. I think in my past experience, it is preferable to have a balance within that EDA fund where you'd have some flexibility to do projects as they come, because you can't really anticipate what's coming along the lines. I know, just again from past experience, a lot of the EDA budgets are mostly, you know, a big chunk of personnel, and then it's larger projects, so whether it's, you know, purchasing a property and facilitating that development, or low-income housing, or, you know, providing infrastructure to get some development going, certain things like that that are bigger expenses than, you know, than what we have available right now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Whiting.
I remember back when we didn't have an EDA budget, or it was really just a token, and we didn't have economic development either, so we've come a long way, and I think it's a positive direction, so with that, we're not changing our ask from last year, we're just continuing it. So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution E 2024 Tax 004 and E 2024 Tax 005.
I think we might have to do one at a time.
Well, let's do one at a time, then, how about adopt resolution 2024 Tax 004?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, and a second by Mr. Laura, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution E 2024 Tax 005 approving the special benefit levy of 500,000 in 2025 budget respectively. Which one was, which number was the special benefit levy, was that the first one? All right, then this would be the budget, the 2025 budget.
Okay, I'll second.
So we have again a motion by Mr. Whiting, and a second by Mr. Laura, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2. Okay, thank you for that, and now we have, moving on, five is reports, and on that we have the EDA bill list, go ahead, sir, questions?
Madam President, I have one question, since we, it was on the table, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to ask questions. The momentum strategies, what is it, 9,500 for EDA entrepreneurial strategy?
Okay.
Seems like a lot, what does that encompass?
We have Mr. Kurski going to answer that.
President, board members, so we have a contract with them, that's that 90,000 that's in the budget, so they come here every month, we did not get billed for the month of July because they took July off, as did the entrepreneurs, but it covers their time here, plus all of their travel and any out-of-pocket expenses. It hasn't been, we've been paying them the same amount for, I think this is the third year, and they haven't raised their prices.
What do they do?
So they run our meetings, they deal with all our entrepreneurs, because there's a pretty high level of confidentiality, they work with them on a pretty much weekly basis, and if they have issues, they try and find solutions or come to staff and ask what's available at the state, or work directly with the state with some of the companies.
Didn't that group just have a record turnout at your last meeting and have some good?
Yes, so I think we had close to 30 people at our last meeting, so that group, when we started this program three years ago, was four people, and it's now 30, and originally it was four gentlemen, all about probably my age, it's now a much younger group, probably 50% women. One of the companies in that group just won a major investment from a venture capital firm here in town, made the national news, so, and that consultant worked with that particular company to get that deal lined up.
Perfect, thank you.
The good news is, a lot of those companies are actually located here in Shakopee, or the people are residents of Shakopee.
Right, all right, go ahead.
So what do we spend, is it per year on that?
It's about just over $90,000.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and now we, number six, we have adjournment, any, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 at 7:00.
Do we have a second? So we have a motion by Mr. Laura, and a second by Mr. Delaney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll reconvene in a city council meeting. Item number nine, A1, review of 2025 preliminary budget and levy. Mr. Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, so tonight, we have a presentation on the 2025 preliminary levy and budget. We've compiled a lot of numbers over the last couple of months, and what we're presenting tonight is what staff will be presenting as the preliminary levy at our next council meeting on September 17th. Of course, this would be subject to any changes from council or anything else they want to see tonight. If approved, this would be the maximum levy, the city would be allowed to levy for 2025, so from that point forward, after it's adopted at the next meeting, we'd no longer be able to increase that levy amount. I did leave a couple of slides in here from my last presentation, so I won't go into any huge detail on it, but what's being presented tonight is in line with maintaining low taxes and a stable tax rate while keeping a long-term perspective in mind. Tonight's presentation and memo will be available on the budget page of our city website. And then I also touched base on the sustainable cycle of city government, and at the forefront of that cycle is council and staff's role of ensuring high-quality services are provided to continue and maintain this cycle. The preliminary city levy is currently at 26,744,000, which is an increase of 1,271,000, or 4.99% over last year, and a preliminary EDA levy of 500,000, which is no change from the previous year. I'll touch on the changes in a little more detail as I go through this presentation, but this would include about 950,000, or 4% increase for general fund operations, and a 500,000 capital improvement levy increase. This would be slightly offset by a decrease in debt service. If you recall, in April, council set aside 350,000 of positive general fund balance to be used towards the debt service rather than levy that, which is why that's decreasing. And then, you know, for context, when we talk about a 1% levy increase/decrease, it amounts to about 200 and a little over 250,000 of funding per year, so it's just nice to have that general perspective. Here's a summary of the 2025 preliminary general fund budget, the budget incorporates the general fund portion of the preliminary tax levy, with many of the budget impact items that I'll cover over the next few slides. We're a little further along than we typically would be at this point, as departments have done a really great job in getting their budget requests entered, and then allowing us to reconcile those requests. I have included additional detail in the council packet of the general fund. Our largest portion of the budget continues to be public safety, which includes police, fire, and building inspection, police union contracts, and the fire staffing changes being significant drivers of those budgets. Here's a summary of changes impacting the 2025 preliminary levy in comparison to 2024, so in comparison to last year's budget. All of these I'll touch on again in more detail, but the amount shown in red parentheses represents decreases in the property tax levy. An example would be if we see an increase in fee revenues, that would result in less property tax needed to fund those services, so in this case, red means good, at least specifically for this slide. Through additional revenues and transfers, we're able to offset a little over 1.9 million of the increase in expenses. Overall, the city is anticipating a net increase in non-property tax revenues of 1.6 million. The budget includes payment on lieu of taxes, contribution from the Shakopee Public Utilities. Again, the city and commission have an agreement that they will contribute a certain percentage of their revenues. The 2025 budget estimates an increase of 330,000 in general fund revenues. The city has a joint powers agreement with Scott County to provide prosecution services. That agreement requires the city to pass through the court fines to the county to offset the cost of those services being provided. In the past, and I think I've mentioned this a time or two, but we did not show the revenue separately, and then per state auditor's recommendation, they'd like to show the full revenue and the offsetting expenditure, so we've increased that by 325,000. Again, no net impact, but you'll see both an increase on the revenue and expenditure side. The city's building permits have been strong over the past few years through commercial and residential development. We expect that to continue, maybe at a more moderate level, but we are being a little bit more aggressive with our building revenue forecast for 2025. We've increased those by 303,000. In total, the city has budgeted about 3.4 million in building permit revenue. Sand Venture, we anticipate will be open for the full year in 2025, and then a result of proposed fee schedule increases along with additional demand based on the updated amenities and enhancements out there, we forecast an increase of 181,000. And then there's several organizations that contract with our police department to provide services during the year. With the addition of concerts at the amphitheater, we've increased that revenue by 175,000, which also ends up being offset by overtime costs in the police department.
Mr. Reinhardt, on the Sand Venture, you'd mentioned about fee increases, didn't we just increase the fees for Sand Venture?
Council has not accepted those increases, we did a presentation on that, that would come back with our fee schedule in the fall, so it has not been voted on.
So what we saw was the potential increase, nothing was voted on?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, thanks.
Is that reflected on this slide?
It is reflected on this slide.
It is reflected on this slide. And then just the last item there, interest income. So based on what we're currently holding and interest rates, we anticipate being able to increase our budget $150,000 for interest income for 2025. So we have budgeted a net increase in in transfers of $264,000. These transfers would be transfers from other funds to the general fund to help pay for operating costs. The city received 1.99 million in one-time public safety aid in 2023. Last year, we used that aid to fund two new patrol officers. This year, we're supporting half that half that cost, so I guess half of two officers or one patrol officer in 2025. So that's actually a reduction in what was transferred or what will be transferred. Staff is also recommending utilizing $350,000 of fund balance from the city's self-insurance fund to have offset any costs associated with potential implementation of a Scott County health insurance pool that we'd be part of, as well as offsetting our increase in health insurance premiums. In 2017, we had initially funded the fund with a $600,000 transfer from the general fund as we had kind of explored our own self-insurance options at that time. Moving on to expenditure changes, like most other cities, our operational costs are being primarily driven by personnel costs. About three-quarters of our increase in expenditures are on the personnel side. Wages and benefits account for about 70% of our general fund costs. The city has three unions, patrol sergeants, and public works. All three unions were settled in 2024 and cover a three-year period between 2024 and 2026. Preliminary 2025 budget was built with the assumption that union, non-union will see an equivalent 3% cost of living adjustment across all the employee groups. It amounts to about $601,000. And then impacts of market adjustments to union contracts that were not included in the 2024 budget, net to about $198,000. 2024 budget for the fire department included deputy chief, assistant fire chief, fire captain administration, or fire captain administration, and three battalion chiefs, so six total positions, which were reorganized during the current year into two deputy chiefs, three fire captains, office assistant, and two firefighters, so eight positions. Additionally, the paid-on-call firefighters are now included in part-time. The net cost of those staffing changes, including the change in part-time and overtime, went to about $509,000. This increase is partially offset because the city can retain the fire state aid now instead of providing that to the fire relief. That'll be offset by about $345,000 of fire raid that will be retained by the city going forward. 2025 budget also includes an increase in health insurance of 16.7%. This calculates an increase of about $375,000. Data shows significant increase in our utilization over the past 24 months, which has obviously impacted rates. This is, the city is currently exploring, as I kind of mentioned on the previous slide, a health insurance pool with Scott County and the cities of Scott County. And again, to offset, we're proposing using 355 or $350,000 of fund balance, as I previously mentioned. City was reciprocating of a state grant to pay for the cost of a new building official in 2024. That coverage ended in 2024, but the city's applying for an additional grant funding to cover a portion of the second year of that position. That position's included in the 2025 budget at a cost of $114,000. City's proposing one new position for '25, which is the fire inspector, which is a fire inspector position with a start date of July 1st, 2025. This was identified as a position recommended by the 2025 Citygate Master Fire Study for both succession planning and additional preventative safety inspection purposes. Cost of that position for half the year would be $63,000. 2025 will not be an election year, well, at least more than likely. Well, 2025 will not be a non-election year, requiring not having to hire election judges. The removal of the election judges from last year's budget results in the savings of $109,000. And then the engineering division has transitioned from in-house development inspection services to hiring an outside engineering firm, required to complete required inspections of private development. As a result, the engineering department has reduced their personnel count by one engineering position. And then the contracted inspection services are paid by, are well-built back to the developer. This results in personal cost savings of about $139,000. So that is my longest slide, but obviously, as I mentioned, personnel costs being the biggest factor of our budget. Then listed here are operating adjustments that are anticipated to continue into the future years. County prosecution costs now reflect the full cost of contracted services, which includes that additional $325,000 plus an increase in that contract of $17,500. Operational adjustments include inflationary costs to utilities, electric, gas, water, which were based on the actual costs over the last two-year period. Software costs have been adjusted for, you know, software costs contracted for 2024, 2025. So those increases, as well as anything that was added in 2024 or proposed to add in 2025. And then as a result of the dissolution of the fire relief, the state fire aid payment, which was previously used towards the fire relief pension costs, is now retained by the city to pay for our own pension costs. So that's a reduction in operating expenses.
Mr. Reinhardt, miscellaneous other adjustments is the largest number on this slide, yet it doesn't tell us what it is.
It's really made up of everything that's not included here, so I tried to highlight all the significant items. I mean, if you were to dig into it, there's there's really not anything that that comes out. I can mention a couple of those that are in there, though. With some of the personnel in the fire department, some of the supplies and uniforms, training, some of those things increased. There's an increase in some of the chemicals used for the sand venture pool. Yeah, otherwise, it's just generally speaking, just small increases.
Mr. Lara? Would it be possible to have a breakdown sent to us to review for transparency purposes?
Yes, is the short answer to that.
Any other questions? Carry on.
Yeah, I was just going to say if I could generally pick out a few more, but I think that's what I'll do, is I'll recap that and I can provide that to council. Yeah, there's a fine line between trying to provide everything and then sometimes it just being a little too much.
I think when it comes to budgets, there could never be too much.
Yeah, I'd be happy to present or provide it. And now, on this slide, I tried to recap the rent charges. So there would be the charges to the general fund for future city equipment and facility needs. So the funding source being annual rent charges, which is basically charging back replacement costs of buildings, equipments, park facilities, and IT. The equipment rent increase is both a result of new equipment being added to the schedule, as well as increases in year-over-year costs of vehicles and equipment. As you recall at our CIP presentation, the city does prepare a 20-year equipment replacement schedule that we include in the capital improvement plan that identifies all the equipment, useful life, replacement, and replacement costs.
Delaney?
Just a quick question. And the information technology rent, are we adjusting that? I mean, looking back here at the software adder for $135K, so are we adjusting our information technology rent to keep up with that?
Yeah, and so that's a good question. So within that information technology fund, it doesn't include most of the software. I mean, the only thing that's going in that is things that really apply across across everything. So it'd be our servers or phone system, you know, those being a couple of examples. So typically, our software costs are budgeted within each individual department, as they may have a piece of software that only they only use.
Thank you.
So again, equipment was probably the biggest driver of rent changes this year. So we do kind of calculate what that replacement cost should be, but we have adjusted them further based on what we have for current balances within those funds. As an example, in 2024, we sold some fire vehicles and put the proceeds back in the equipment replacement fund. So things like that, we've taken in account, and we've actually reused these from our original calculation, even though that seems like a big number, but certainly vehicles have gone up quite a bit. And then one-time adjustments. So generally speaking, we try to moderate ups and downs through these internal rent charges, but there are a few items that are just kind of one-time things that are in the budget or not recurring in the future. So what you might see as a one-time adjustment this year will be a one-time adjustment the other way the next year. There's three new vehicles being proposed in 2025. A police side-by-side, which would be used during large entertainment events such as concerts at the amphitheater. That side-by-side would be purchased out of tribal funds. New vehicles are also being proposed for the building inspector and then the proposed new fire inspector position. These would be offset by an increase in forecast building permit revenue. So if you recall us raising those revenues on the previous slide.
These vehicles aren't fully decked out for fire vehicles. They're just transportation vehicles?
Um, yes.
Clearly from the price.
Yes, they would, they would be, kind of the SUV truck type of vehicle, not, you know, a firefighting.
Probably some radio equipment and.
Correct.
Minimal stuff.
Then in the 2024 budget was the one-time implementation cost included of the Oracle Cloud ERP software, which has been removed from the 2025 budget. Although implementation did not occur as planned in 2024, we've we've set these funds aside in the technology fund for future implementation. So that would be a reduction in what we would need to levy. Then, oops, I got one more. So the use of fund balance. So in 2024, the city had set aside $200,000 of fund balance within the general fund to help offset operating costs for sand venture in 2024. The funding ultimately lowered the impact on the 2024 property tax levy. This was removed from the 2025 budget, and the city's not proposing to use any general fund reserves. So in financial terms, we're proposing a balanced budget with what is being presented tonight. During the capital improvement plan, work session on August 7th, staff and city council reviewed the 2025 and 20 through 2029 CIP and project program for 2025. The CIP identified $42.8 million in projects for 2025. Costs of maintaining city streets have significantly increased over the past decade. That the annual cost of overlays and reconstruction projects in the previous 2020, 2020 to 2024 CIP was $3.7 million. That cost has almost doubled to the 2025 to 2029 CIP at an annual cost of $7.9 million. Funding sources have remained relatively flat, those being the capital improvement levy, special assessments, municipal state aid, and then franchise fees. We're proposing a $500,000 increase in the capital improvement levy to kind of help prevent the gap becoming from growing or increasing further. The city has utilized one-time transfers in the general fund and bond proceeds in the past to kind of support these projects, which we'll anticipate continuing to do so in the future, but this will help kind of prevent that funding gap from growing to a point where we can't can't do that anymore. I did put a little note here on the bottom of the slide. This is from our 2023 community survey. 67% of Shakopees are willing to pay more to keep the roads well-maintained. So we think there is some value in maintaining what we're doing. Next slide here is the debt service levy. Last year's budget, we used $226,000 of urine balance to help defray the levy increase for the 2022 A improvement bonds. Again, earlier this year, council approved, basically set aside enough to pay for that whole 2025 debt service payment. So there's a reduction in what is needed. Staff will also need council to approve a debt service reduction resolution prior to September 30th for both the available fund balance of the 2022 improvement bond, as well as the 2016 A debt service fund in order to be able to do that without having to levy it. Transitioning to market value information, which is kind of the other piece of the equation when it comes to how the levy impacts our property tax payers. These will be based on information from Scott County as of the end of August. Unfortunately, when it comes down to tax rates, there was about a million-dollar decrease in tax capacity from what they had previously provided with their July numbers. So from our August work session where we talked about some of the tax rates and stuff, those have definitely, it's definitely had an impact on those. The city's taxable market value is $8.4 billion, which is an increase of $658 million or 8.5% from last year. Apartment, commercial, and industrial market value grew at the fastest rates. New construction accounted for about $250 million of the increase in taxable market value.
Good question. Agriculture, that jumped like.
I was going to say the same thing.
Two, three times, that's.
So what what what'll happen there, especially if you look at the number of parcels, so it's egg. Eggland is typically being converted into residential. So you'll see sometimes some weird numbers as those they go through the process.
So is it like a layover year or something until it gets reclassified, something like that?
I can double-check that, but that's typically what it would be.
It's no longer egg. It's getting developed, but it's it doesn't have certificate of occupancy, so it can't really be classified as residential.
Thank you.
And then one slide here to just touch base on residential property values, just to provide some overall context. The average home value change is 3.2%, so the average home, well, the average home of, the average value change of existing homes is about 3.2%. As you can see from this chart, 70% of residential homes' values will change between 0 and 5%, so that's where the majority of them fall. For taxes payable in 2025, the homestead market value exclusion will increase from $417,000 to $517,000. This exclusion is on a sliding scale and basically phases out at $517,000. So anything under $517,000 will see a bigger amount of their taxable market value excluded from the property tax calculation. Ultimately, this shifts the property tax to other properties that aren't residential under $517,000. My probably least favorite slide here, fiscal disparities. So I've updated this through 2025. The tax capacity of the city is adjusted for the fiscal disparities program, which is unique to the seven-county metro area here in Minnesota. 40% of commercial and industrial growth since 1971 gets contributed into the pool, and then we receive a distribution based on population and market value of all property per person compared to the average market value within the seven-county metro area. We are one of the larger net contributors to the program. I don't have updated, they haven't updated the statewide chart yet, but last year's data showed that we were nine out of 179 communities, obviously that, if anything, will be even higher. This chart shows the net contribution to fiscal disparities for Shakopee in terms of tax capacity, with a growing industrial and commercial base has gone from $2.4 million back in 2015 to $9.5 million in 2025. And I put that in the context of total tax capacity. It's about 8.6% of our tax capacity that would contribute into the program. So that's our net contribution amount. What's even a little wild here is if look at how much has increased from last year by about $2.8 million or 42% over the last year, so.
$9.4 million.
That explains another reason why you see the tax rate being slightly different than what I showed you in August. So this chart compares the city's tax, or the tax rate over the past 10 years, including 2025, based on the market values and what we're proposing tonight as the preliminary levy. There'd be a slight increase from last year to 27.58%, but very, very minimal change. This chart provides the information on the median value home and city property taxes paid on that home since 2020. The value of the median value home has increased from $338,400 to $357,000 over the past year. So it's a $12,300 or 3.6% increase. For the median value home, again, it's taking in account the value change as well as levy. It equates to about an increase of $17 or 1.9% in property taxes. Absent any change in value, homeowners at that median value amount, so if it stayed from, if it was $357,000, it was $357,000 again, it'd actually be about a $20 decrease, and that's really a result of the market value exclusion. So yeah, so depending on how your value changed, certainly impact you differently. And then for reference, when we talk about a 1% increase-decrease, for the median value home, it's about $10 for each percent levy increase or decrease. This slide has been updated for this year, so this is a comparison of the cost of services of a $300,000 home utilizing 5,000-gallon. of a $300,000 home utilizing 5,000 gallons of water. I should mention, updated for this year being 2024. The city of Shakopee is responsible for sewer and storm utilities. The annual cost for Shakopee is much lower in comparison to our comparison cities. We're at about 1,096, and the cities range from 1,029 to 2,040. The cost for the, Shakopee actually went down from 2023 since our tax rate saw a decrease last year. And then here's a comparison of estimated preliminary levies based on a couple of informal surveys that kind of floated around the various metro cities. So not exactly a scientific poll, just what other people had gathered that I put on the chart. But we're near the bottom. I think there's going to be very few cities within this metro area that'll see anything under 5% where we're at.
Looks, looks like Ingraham Grove Heights is, is below us, but if you go back to the slide previous, their tax levy is one of the highest comparables. So they probably didn't need to go up.
That, that's an exceptionally good point, Councilman, because, you know, as we look at these, it's important to understand, first of all, that we're starting as one of the lowest tax communities in the state, and we're bringing in a 4.9%. And then as, as Nate had shown you, every, what everybody else is doing, you know, they're not as low as we are. So, you know, the impact is even better for our residents.
And it, it is my intention to reach out to these comparable cities prior to September 17th and trying to get what they're proposing for next year, just to kind of give you an idea what these comparable and surrounding cities are doing. But obviously, there's different factors for each city that drive their levy or, or That is it for my presentation. Yeah, again, I'll, I'll bring back the preliminary levy at the September 17th meeting, and then in November, whatever's adopted at the September 17th meeting will be what's on the preliminary property tax statements that are mailed out to the county, and that might be the point in time where you may get questions or may not get questions. And then I'll leave it open to any questions or comments you might have.
Questions?
No.
I have a few. The equipment rent, building rent, park asset fund, information technology fund, and capital improvement fund. Are there any revenues that come off of TIF districts going into them funds? Not the underlying land, but the TIF district itself.
I, I mean, I, so the, so the increment will go back into the increment district, so it depends on what those are used for. Obviously, a number of our increment districts have done infrastructure projects.
The question is, is does a current TIF district pay into these funds? I know they're getting the benefit of the equipment and, and the buildings that provide the services to them.
You know, you know the answer to that, don't you?
Well, transparency, are they paying into these funds?
So as, as you alluded to, the, obviously, the base values are, they're still paying property taxes on their base values that are coming within.
The base value is frozen, correct?
Yeah, and, and when the TIF district is decertified, then you have all that value that will be contributing into these funds.
And they're usually 10 to 20 years in timeframe?
No.
How long is that TIF district?
Uh, it depends on what type of district it is. So economic development districts will be seven to nine years, and then your redevelopment and your housing districts, they can be 20 to 25.
Okay. And when we go back to the, the payroll increase for this year, it was almost $2 million in wages and benefit increases on top of, you know, the normal wages and cost, the total levy, I guess, 23 million, right? Do TIF districts pay into these services?
Well, again, you're referring to the property taxes specifically, right? Sam's Club abatements, do they pay in?
Nope, they don't.
There you go.
So, so they're basically getting services provided, but they're not paying revenue into the general fund to help pay for those services. They're, they're not paying into the capital improvement fund, they're not paying into the park asset fund, and all of these funds that need these increases, them increases are falling on the regular taxpayers that pay into the general fund in their taxes.
But you'll vote for Sam's Club abatement. Million, we're rich as men in the world.
That would be Bezos and his, what is it, his fifth airplane today or something?
So you're mixing your messages here.
Well, I just, it, it should be clear, you're making an investment for some odd reason, whether it's jobs or whatever the case might be, but we, we gotta understand, you're, you're making that investment for whatever reasons, knowing that everybody else is gonna have to pitch in to provide them services. And pitch in to pay for these funds that we utilize to prevent major spikes in the tax rate, or tax levy.
Wouldn't a better question actually be, what are the expenses those particular TIF districts are incurring?
Well, they're paying for infrastructure that D.R. Horton is paying for themselves, right?
No, they actually would be paying, if it wasn't for the TIS, TIF districts, residents would be paying for those.
So why would residents, why would, wait a minute, why would residents pay for internal roads for this development but not this development?
Well, one, you can't TIF a housing development, okay? Not in the state of Minnesota. So let's, let's look, let's look at Fourth Avenue.
We have, we have housing in our TIF districts.
But you can't TIF housing specifically. So you can't TIF a brand-new housing development on a field, a barren field. But let's, let's go back and look, let's, let's use the Fourth Avenue TIF, which is a great example, which has been portrayed as a gift to the richest man in the country who, who, who had nothing to do with the, the building, it was actually built by USAA. The TIF for that actually went, right now, I don't know who owns it at this point, it's rented.
Obsidary of Amazon.
What's that?
Obsidary of Amazon.
That's incorrect.
They lease it to themselves. That's what we were told when they actually applied and when we had the hearings.
Well, that's, that's incorrect. It was USAA that built it originally, MetLife now owns it. So, I mean, if we're gonna talk about this, we gotta be honest about it.
Absolutely.
So let's, let's talk about what happened with those funds. Those funds were used to pay for Fourth Avenue.
Yep.
And for County Road 83. Now, please, if I may, if the funds weren't used for that, all of that would have to come back on the general taxpayer to pay for. That's the reality.
Okay. Did they pay any assessments on them improvements? 30%, 70% assessment?
We are the ones that.
And where did the 70, where did the 70% come, where does the 70% come from on these projects if the city paid for it? From those that pay property taxes. Where does the 30% of our assessment policy come from, the property owner that benefits? Did they pay 30% on them improvements since they benefited and they needed them for their service?
I think everybody that was along there paid the required amount for those particular.
Did we get any roads out of an abatement?
Which one?
Sam's Club. I don't think we got anything. I think, I think the millionaire got the money there.
No, at that, in that particular case, we wanted the jobs, right?
Well, not all of us.
And I said that early, we, we're making decisions based on what, what is it we're trying to accomplish? We wanted jobs, we wanted, you know, in that case, the argument was.
At least we got, in the TIF district, we got something back. The abatement, we just gave it away, we, we got the jobs, but, you know, warehouse jobs. We, we appreciate jobs at certain times, but there's, and the millionaire, so you're talking two different things. The TIF district gave us something back, the tax abatement, in my mind, didn't give us anything tangible other than the jobs that the building was already gonna get filled up with anyway.
Okay. But at any rate, the point is, is they're not, they're not participating, yet they're receiving the services. So, and that puts that cost on everybody else. If we're gonna raise wages $2 million, we need to recognize that there's not participation from.
And we made that decision at the time.
How many residential properties are in Canterbury?
And those TIF districts were voted on at the time with those understandings at the time.
I totally, I, I'm not arguing that. I'm saying that, I'm not. I'm saying that we have, you know, 5,000 people living in Canterbury TIF?
Every budget, you, you bring up these TIF districts that we voted on in the past, and we're clearing them off year by year.
And that's good. If council wants to keep approving TIF districts, then recognize that you're not gonna have the dollars coming in from the improvements going into the general fund to pay for the services provided. That's what I'm saying.
For a, for a couple-year period, and then once you do, you've essentially, it's like a bank. So we know that at an, at a time when those come off, you know, you've increased what you may have received $30,000 for, now becomes $2 million in taxes that you're gonna receive for.
Yep.
And that is, that is a hell of a deal. I don't care where you see it. And the reality is, is that TIFs aren't good for everything, but they do have value. And we have a handful of TIFs in the community at this point.
It's not, go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry, if you have something you wanna say.
Well, I was just pointing out, it, it's a good deal for those that are here after it decertifies and gets on the tax rolls, but it's, it's not necessarily a good deal for somebody that's not gonna be here for that, whether, whether they're at the end of life or whatever. They won't see the benefits, yet they are currently paying for the services, they're paying into all these other funds to make sure that we don't have these spikes.
Unless they're driving down Fourth Avenue.
Well, I mean, you could argue each one. I'm trying to get at the basics and not argue about who supported jobs, who supported housing, who supported this, who supported that, because that's really not the issue. The issue is.
But you're only bringing up the TIF districts, not the.
Because they're not paying in for services received. Okay, anyway, do we have anything else? Do we have any questions of staff? Thank you, Darren. Or Nate, sorry. Darren was our old finance director.
I saw him the other day, actually. I saw him the other day. He's doing very well.
What's he doing?
Very well, yeah. He's, he's got his own, own things to worry about at Minnetoka too, but, yeah.
Don't share our printers in the basement with them, okay? All right. Item 10A, city bill list.
No questions.
A, go over there, go over here. Okay. 10B, liaison administration. I think we're on the Delaney side.
All right, so I went to the MMUA conference up in Fargo, North Dakota. Two things that stood out, of course, I love all things technical. I participated in their cybersecurity. We had a tabletop ransom attack exercise, and it was, for me, it was eye-opening. Also, we did get a chance to talk to some, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is this stuff that the Spock Commission wants you to discuss publicly?
Uh, yeah, it's, I guess it's pretty open. We were tabletop.
Okay, just checking.
So from that, we got into discussions with some of the other utilities. There have been two successful ransom attacks that have happened in our community, and it led to some great questions I just wanted to bring back here for discussion with our, pretty much the council and, and staff. Now, they can refer to answers or actions, just putting this out there because when they got asked, I, of course, was like, well, if this happens to us, we, you know, do we have a response? A couple are, do we, do we provide cyber awareness training? What does it contain and how often is it required? Would we consider events as far as cyber attacks versus incidents? If we have them, who do we report them to, or how does those get reported? Have we done a cyber risk assessment? If incidents do happen, what actions are taken and by whom? What notifications would we need to be made and by whom? And keep in mind, the clock is ticking. Do you pay a ransom if we, if our city does get hit, the computers are locked down, do we pay a ransom? Do we have cyber insurance? Do we have resources to respond to a cyber event? Do we have pre-designated personnel who are tasked to do, and know what to do in the event of a, of an attack? What's our public response? I mean, does our communications director, you know, let people know, especially if personal information has been involved and compromised? So this, just some of the questions that came out of that, just, just for thought, not to, no action tonight. Mr. Reynolds?
I hope that the legislature might look in the future about giving councils the ability to go into closed session, discuss things like this. These are things that I would never discuss openly, simply because in this environment, all communities are getting bombarded currently. Communities in the state do suffer losses, and, and it's very difficult. I mean, we've made changes with our bill list because several communities in the last couple of months, that was one avenue that cyber criminals were able to walk through. So, you know, I think we can individually talk about those particular issues. I would love the opportunity to have a workshop in closed session to fully brief council on this stuff, and maybe we can do that one-on-one if we have to.
Okay.
But, but it's all important questions. I feel very confident that we are as best prepared as we can possibly be, and I'll leave it at that.
Yep. Again, this is not, this is just information I've learned, it's not for any action, just for general discussion. I appreciate the feedback and discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really, I really think that that's something that, that the legislature should look at to give us the ability to, to talk about, you know, frankly, in not open session, because it's, it's rife for people to watch and pick.
Legislature priority from Shakopee.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Take it to scale, see if we can get everybody else on board.
Okay, don't, more on that, on the heels of that, I did go to the First Amendment and social media tools. So this is, I know it's election season. Again, another great discussion, there was a lawyer there giving the presentation, says, gotta keep in mind, I'm not your lawyer, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not your lawyer, he's giving the advice. Things to keep in mind, I know, I think it's Rochester just locked down their Facebook page, so you can't comment on it, and we got in a great discussion about that, is that violating First Amendment rights? Can somebody sue in that process? So things to keep in mind, if you are running for office or if you are in office, you're blocking people, deleting comments, your personal account versus your public account, disclaimers, I mean, those are things that came up that were, again, just bringing it back for discussion, no action, no.
You're telling about, about the education you've received.
Yeah, it was, it was eye-opening, it was, it was awesome discussion. So that was my, my week. Again, I do find this stuff fascinating, by the way.
Mr. Whitey?
I have nothing to report. You try us?
So August, so my liaisons are coming up, these on the first, you know, two weeks of the month, but for August 22nd, I did attend the firefighters swear-in. And then, just a quick reminder, if I can do that, our TAP event is this Saturday, so tickets are still available, and you can find those at www.tap2024.com. So see you there.
Very good. I plan on attending, I'll probably need a sober cab. But let's see, August 22nd, I attended the fire department badging of our captains and a couple of firefighters. Also on August 22nd, staff and myself had the intergovernmental workshop with Scott County Parleak and the Midwakaton, basically review projects that they're all working on. We don't have a remedy for the moving of the ORF for people's leaves and tree branches and stuff, so we'll see where that goes. And maybe there won't be a remedy, and we'll just have to use the new place and, and pay to use it, I don't know, but I'm sure people are gonna ask the questions, soon as it gets cold and the leaves start falling down. So, 27th, I attended the police retirement. How do you pronounce his last name properly? Chatterdon?
Chatterdon.
Pardon me?
Chatterdon.
There you go. Twenty-some years of service to our community, 25 total in policing. Tough to see them long-term experienced folks leave and retire, but, you know, when they get to retirement, I asked him what he's gonna be doing, he's gonna be by, driving a beer truck, so I gave my address. You stop by with a defective stuff, you know? But we do have a lot of new recruits that we've hired to, we, we kinda anticipated this, but that, that long-term experience is priceless and hard to replace. Hopefully, we captured a bunch of that to train our new folks with, and I'm sure we did, because we had a great field training program. So that's my report to council and staff. Any, any other business? Item number 11, Mr. Whitey?
I just have one thing. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we actually do have a free cyber, sober ride home program that we will be, for, you can find out more information at TAP. If you have had too much to drink, we can make sure that you have a free ride home. So, there we go.
Thank you, sir. Any other business? Item number 12.
I'll move to adjourn to Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion and a motion. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned. It is 10:810.